Good morning. I'm gonna call our commission meeting for August 20th, 2024 to order and note for the record that we have a full quorum of commissioners present. Before we get started, just silence your cell phone and avoid the embarrassment. And if you're gonna speak today, we have a sign up in the back of the room in the corner by the door. So please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Look for a motion now to approve our agenda.
It's my motion.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Oh, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on then to our consent agenda. Our consent agenda is, we act on routine items by one motion on board of the commissioners. Items can be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member. They would be moved to the bottom of the agenda preceding the liaison report. Is there anybody from the public that would like to consent on an item, I'm sorry, comment on an item on the consent agenda? Any commissioner like to remove anything from the consent agenda? I guess the only comment I have, we had a lot of bills to pay. Most of it went to the state and some bigger highway contracts. All right. I would look for a motion to approve our consent agenda.
Still moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Kipley?
Aye.
Blainberg?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on to regular business. A second reading to consider an adoption of ordinance MC 6624 and ordinance amending ordinance MC 6021 regarding the licensing and regulation of medical cannabis dispensaries. Good morning, Tom.
Good morning, Tom Greco, Commissioned Administrative Officer. So this is the second reading. The first one was on August 6th. This ordinance MC 6624 is an amendment to, an ordinance passed in 21 MC 60-21, which is our licensing and regulation of medical cannabis. This particular amendment makes one major change, which is that it eliminates the random selection process and replaces that process with a process that will permit the county to issue the single dispensary, dispensary, dispensary license, excuse me, to the first qualified applicant to apply. So it's important the first qualified applicant that applies. Additionally, there are some other minor additional changes that correct terminology references and clarify the revocation process. This particular amendment to the ordinance, if adopted, would become effective September 19th. There is still a requirement for the auditor's office to publish a notice of the availability of the license on our website. That would be anticipated to be posted again if adopted on September 19th. So the earliest someone would be able to apply would be once that notice is posted online. So certainly if people are interested, they should keep an eye on that. Subject to your questions, that's all I have.
All right. We'll take public comment first. Any public comment on this agenda item? All right. Moving it to the commissioners. Commission questions, comments? Commissioner Bender.
I think we had a chance to talk about our comments, or at least I did at our last meeting. I'm fully in support of this. I think it makes sense and I would make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion is second. I do have one question, Tom, and I apologize for not thinking of this sooner. So if the license is issued and we have no active licenses available, we don't take applications unless the license becomes available again? And then it would be on a first come, first served basis? Okay. All right. Call the roll.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Kipley?
Aye.
Blainberg?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on. Consider an appeal of a decision by the Minnehaha County Planning Commission to approve conditional use permit number 2435 to allow a manufactured home on the property legally described as tract seven lots three and lot four, Voight subdivision, section 21, T 101, NR 451, West Wall Lake Township. Good morning, Kevin.
Good morning. I'm Kevin Hookman from the County Planning Department. This is an appeal of Planning Commission decision for conditional use permit 2435. Property is located on the south side of West Shore Place. There is a good photo of it, which is on the far side of the lake. So it's on the non-lake side of the property. The applicant is requesting to construct a manufactured home on the property, which requires a conditional use permit. The proposed manufactured home is 28 feet wide and 40 feet long. The Planning Commission did hear this item on July 22nd Planning Commission meeting. There was neighborhood residents that submitted a petition prior to this hearing and one neighbor that did speak at the hearing. The Planning Commission approved at the conditional use permit unanimously with six votes in favor of the motion. This approval came with five conditions on the request. I have PowerPoint. Maybe we'll kind of scroll through some of the pictures here. We're both trying here. So yeah, there's the request, the map again. So this would be the plan for the layout of the manufactured home. You can see the dimensions written in on the sides. This is the property. The property is quite small. Just for reference, the Board of Commissioners, that same, excuse me, the Board of Appeals, that same night did approve a variance for this property as well. The variance allows the manufactured home to be into the required setback in the front yard, and that was part of this approval. But that cannot be appealed to this body, so that is not part of this hearing. But you can see here the properties nearby. There's mostly garages on this side of the street, garages and other accessory buildings. Everything's close to the road. There's the properties kind of across the street and like a pin right here where the edge of the proposed manufactured home would go. And there's another photo with that pin here where the corner of the manufactured home would go and the existing accessory building on the property. The Minnehaha County Commission can uphold, deny, or amend the Planning Commission decision to approve the conditional use permit 2435, and I'm here for any questions.
All right. Before we go, we're gonna, in the order we're gonna go is we're gonna go proponents, those who are in favor of the putting the property or putting the home on the property. Those opposed to it would then rebuttal by the proponent. I'm gonna take questions from the commission first. If you have questions for Kevin at this time, we'll go back to questions from the commission again later. Okay. So is the applicant or any proponents of this conditional use permit here that would like to address the commission? Please step forward, give us your name.
Hi. My name's Brianna Reese. I'm here at the 46234 West Shore Place address. Just trying to build a home. Been living there for 25 years roughly. Just trying to build something for me and my son to live in, close to my family, and they live right across the street actually from that address there. So it's just something that we're looking forward to doing. I know I've had a couple neighbors that aren't too fond of it, but after discussing with a couple of them what my plans are, I think they've kind of stepped down a little bit from the, from all of it. So I'm hoping today that this is something that we can get approved. And if you have any questions for me, I'd be glad to answer them for you.
Any questions for Brianna? Mr. Chair Kipley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At the Planning Commission level, it was kind of helpful when you described the nature of the home that you're hoping to place there and kind of the modern nature of it.
Yeah. And I did bring pictures today, too, if you'd like to see them.
I think, I think that'd be helpful.
Yeah, okay.
Can you put them up on the?
Elmo?
Yeah.
So this is, this is how the home will be placed. It'll be on a beam setting. So that way it's pretty well structured. This is what the home will look like. Very modern, you know, manufactured home. They're not built like they used to be in the 1970s. So it's, it will have skirting on it, but it's insulated skirting. That was kind of another thing that people were worried about when it came to the home. But it is all brand new. It'll be built in 2025. I'm trying to get that. There we go. So this is what the inside will look like. So very up to date. And then kind of a another picture of what the interior will look like, if that helps explain it at all. A lot of the homes that are built in that area are built from the 1960s, 1970s. So this is new to them, you know. So the fact that new homes coming into the area is a little bit scary, I'm sure. But I rest assured, you know, me living there as long as I have, I intend to take care of this plant, you know, this home and, and everything around it. So just like my parents have done and I've done for years now, so.
Well, will the home run parallel to the red line or will it run?
Yep, parallel. So it'll run along.
To the road there, basically.
Yep, just like the shed next to them are running, it'll run the same direction.
Okay. Commissioner Bender?
I know in reading the materials that were submitted in advance, one of the concerns that was raised by some of your neighbors were snow removal and how there won't be any room to move snow if the variance is granted. Can you just address that issue for us?
Yes. So actually, if you see where the shed is at on the build or on the property, the home will actually be sitting roughly near how the shed is sitting, which gives it a leeway of, you know, even parking space in the front there. We haven't had issues in the past or up to this present time with snow removal in that area. If anything, my father's the one that usually pushes the snow back. But typically what we'll do is, you know, I'll make sure that the snow is cleared in the front entrance way there to the home. So they don't have to worry about it ever going into the road or anything like that if that's a worry, so.
Okay, thank you.
Kevin, if I could ask you a quick question. So the 15-foot setback, I'm looking at that house on the lower left of the photo. Is that 15 foot? Is it gonna be about the same distance as the home that's next to it?
So it'll probably be close to this corner here on this part of the shed. And there is, this part of the shed will be closer than the proposed manufactured home. The way that it was approved for the setback reduction is that the home itself has to be at least 20 feet back and then allow the additional five feet for like a front deck or something to, to walk out on. And that would be allowing a full car length to park in front of the house without being within that right of way.
So the structure itself is 20 feet, but any attachments to the home could go out another five feet?
Yep.
Okay. Good. Thank you. That helps. Good. Any other proponents for this conditional? Yeah, make sure it's a CUP, conditional use permit. Anybody else want to speak in favor of it? Okay, we'll give opponents to the conditional use permit. Anybody here opposed to the conditional use permit? All right. No need for a rebuttal then. I will turn it back to the commission for discussion and action.
I would make a motion to approve the conditional use permit as a manufactured home.
I'll second.
I have a motion in a second to uphold the decision by the Planning Commission, I believe is the general, okay, direction we're going here? Okay. Call the roll.
Benega?
Aye.
Kipley?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Blainberg?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye. Motion carries. All right. Moving on then, a public hearing to consider declaring the property legally described as tract 12 McCroskey tracks in section 10, T 102 North, R 49 West, a public nuisance and enact South Dakota codified law 21106. Hello again, Kevin.
Yes. This is the first of a few nuisance actions that we are gonna be requesting for today. The address for this property is 47565 Niner Circle. It is located approximately two and a half miles north of Sioux Falls. We can go to the picture. So that's the, the site of the property. So this initial complaint started in the fall of last year of inoperable trailers and other junk on the property. Staff visited the property several times and sent letters several times and found that there was little contact regarding the property owner or any action taken. I will note that this property has had a history of reoccurring nuisances on the property. In previous cases, the nuisances were generally removed over time or progressively getting better, and that was not the case for this time. The no parent action was taken. Staff did visit the property on August 15th and took updated photos, and I'll go through the PowerPoint here soon. At that site visit, I did notice some of the nuisance items were still visible, I'll point out. But there were some changes, such as the camper that was parked in the right of way. You can even see it on this imagery right here. Has been moved out of the right of way, which is helpful. But the, it is unlikely that that camper has been licensed since it has been licensed for many years. But I could not determine if there's any licenses on it. I'll note that because the license plates were on the far side of the, in, out of view from the right of way. There are also still miscellaneous abandoned items on the property, such as junk and that still remain on the property. South Dakota codified law does allow the county to declare a public nuisance and clean up the property and defray the cost of the property owner. And I'll go through a few of the photos here. So this is beginning last year. You can see the trailers here, pretty rough shape. Stuff is stacked up in front of the garage and underneath this tree. And then there's the trailer in the right of way here. And you can see that this doesn't even have wheels moving forward. Some other photos. Not much has changed. This is over kind of the winter. Same kind of setup. And then this would be most recently here in August. You can see a few things have been moved, but there's still kind of miscellaneous stuff in the property. And even if this camper is licensed, is clearly inoperable with how, what conditions of the camper. So it is still a public nuisance. I would note also that the license on the pickup has changed. So that is, was something that kind of has been off and on licensed. Right, it just recently expired this last month. So at the last site visit, it was expired, but it was just recently. So that may be something that we can work with the property owner to re-tag that, that pickup and get that back on the, to be parked there. Staff is requesting that the County Commission declare the property legally described as tract 12 McCroskey tracks in section 10, 10249, a public nuisance and enact South Dakota 21106. And I'm here for any questions.
All right. Questions from Kevin? Okay. So this is a public hearing. We will take proponents of the action to declare this a public nuisance. Anybody here in favor of declaring this a public nuisance? All right. We'll take opponents. Typically, that might be the property owner of declaring this a public nuisance. This is the property owner here or anybody opposed to this action declaring this a public nuisance? All right. I'll turn the action back then to the commission or back to the commission for action. Discussion?
Mr. Chair, I guess I would just ask the clarifying question of Kevin. This, the original notice letter is August of 2023, so this has been going on for about a year. Is that a fair? And all the letters in our packet here, we've given them plenty of notice and they were given notice of this hearing today, but we don't see them here today. Okay. Thanks for clarifying.
If I may.
Commissioner Bender?
So Kevin, I just wanna, I mean, I think that from my perspective, as we go through these various ones this morning, this is the one that is the least troublesome right now, the least amount of material that would need to be removed. And so I'm just trying to understand if, and it does seem like they've made some progress. It's always discouraging when there's no communication from anybody. It's very discouraging for all of us. It's a lot of time and energy that the county has put in to trying to address this without anybody even having the courtesy to respond. So if, if we declare this as a public nuisance, then I just want to be clear about what, what actions we would take. We would go out and remove the camper that's inoperable. Would we remove any vehicles that are not licensed?
Yes. If the camper or the pickup are not licensed, then we'd remove those.
And then the miscellaneous items that are sitting outside, some of which have been now tarped in these most recent pictures, would those all be removed as well?
Yes.
And then the bill for that service would be sent to be placed on that property?
Correct. It'd be placed on the, as a special assessment.
Okay. Thank you. Well, normally I would try to work with property owners, particularly when there has been some progress like this, and see if we can't get something done. But when we're not getting, when there's no communication, there's nobody here, we've been working on this for a year, I would be in favor of declaring this a public nuisance and having it cleaned up.
Share the exact same sentiment and second the motion.
Motion and a second. Additional comments?
I would agree and echo your sentiments, Commissioner Bender. And the only consolation that I feel, because this does seem to be the less offensive of the ones we're dealing with today, is that hopefully the bill reflects that.
All right. You know, I look at it, and if it was in my neighborhood, I probably wouldn't be real happy. And especially I'm trying to keep my yard clean and looking nice. And just moving stuff around is not cleaning it up. And that's kind of what it looks like was done. I mean, parking stuff in the right of way is absolutely not tolerated. But to just move it back further into the property, it, it's a mess. It's not gonna take long and it's probably not gonna be expensive. But I also favor it. So let's have a roll call vote.
Bender?
Aye.
Kipley?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Blainberg?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye. Motion carries. Public hearing to consider declaring the property legally described as tract 1A Peterson's third edition in the southeast one quarter, the northeast one quarter, section 26, T 103 North, R 49W, a public nuisance and enact South Dakota codified law 21106.
All right. So this item is located at 254737, 477th Avenue. It is located approximately five miles southeast of Baltic. This complaint started in the winter of this year. The, over complaints about inoperable vehicles and junk on the property, staff sent letters throughout the year. The property owner has taken some action to remove some items, but there was fairly minimal considering the volume of the, the amount of items that are there. And we'll see that there's a lot going on, on this property. Staff visited the, the property here just a week ago and took updated photos. The unlicensed vehicles, junk and scraps still remain with minimal changes from the first visit. And again, staff is requesting that this is declared a public nuisance. And we'll go over a couple of the photos. So here's some of the photos from that initial site visit. Got a little fuzzy there. I will note that the property owner has pointed out that there has been some related, like, issues with his property. He's been trying to clean up too. Like, you could see there's some fire damage here. And so he's been trying to take care of his house in the midst of all this. And that's been part of his reasoning for why the yard hasn't been cleaned up as much as staff would like it to be seen. You'll see here, like a mountain of debris here. So it's not just the cars. Like, this is a lot of stuff that needs to be removed off the property. And this would be the spring, throughout that winter year, which there wasn't a whole lot of snow. It could have been kind of worked on, on warmer days. And yet in the spring, there wasn't much action. Continue with that mountain here. I caught it on a rainy day there. But the vehicles have largely remained in place on the property. And then here would be the most recent photos of the property from last week. You can see there may have been some vehicles picked up, but as I pointed out before, the general property is still in quite a bit of, of disrepair and nuisance condition. So I'm here for any questions.
Questions for Kevin? Kevin, that pile of stuff, I mean, the structure had a fire, or this residence had a fire? Is that the stuff that was moved out and just piled in the yard? Is that kind of what it might be?
I'm not entirely sure. It does appear to be more along the lines of car parts and other parts of vehicles that have been stacked up in that pile.
Is there an owner occupied certificate on this residence? Do you know?
I did not look that up, no.
Any other questions from Kevin? All right. So we are going back to?
Just one question. Have, is there any history prior to this winter of complaints?
And not on this property. So this would be the first time that we have done any action or request for the property.
All right. We'll move on to proponents of the declaring this a public nuisance. Anybody here that would like to speak in favor of declaring this a public nuisance? All right. Moving on to opponents. Anybody here, again, maybe the property owner opposed to declaring this a public nuisance, an explanation for the condition or plan to clean it up? Please. I just need your name, please.
Max Reefer.
Morning.
Morning. Yeah. Other than the fire I had four feet of water in my basement, too. Set me way back. I still got to deal with that. I still have stuff to be hauled out of there, too. I've been trying to keep things moving. The big mound of stuff is on a trailer. And I did pick up a building permit to put up a storage shed, cold storage, to be able to move some of it in. And I realize there is still And I realize there is still some to be hauled off. Probably more than I like to admit.
Questions from the property owner? For the property owner? When did you obtain that building permit, sir?
First of the month.
Yeah, it might have been the first of the month.
Okay, how big of a structure are you planning to put up?
Ten by twenty-four.
Ten by twenty-four, okay. And do you live in this property?
Yes.
You do live there, okay. Couple other questions come to mind. Any other commissioner have questions? Looking at this photo, sir, I think this is a recent one, is that right? What's the date on this picture?
Yeah, it's probably most current.
Okay, August, yeah, okay, I was looking on the bottom right. I mean, those cars have been there a while, those weeds are four feet tall, what?
It don't take long for them things to.
No, it doesn't, I agree, a good wet June and, yep, hot July, I agree. But what's with all the vehicles out there? Are you doing a salvage operation?
No. The blue one that's up in the air, I'm in the process of straightening it back out to make it drivable. The Mustang, which is right next to it. It's hers, she drives it, but she hurt her ankle and hasn't been able to use it this year. The red pickup is my son's, oldest son's. Needs, we need to get a turbo put on there.
Semi-trailer?
The semi-trailer was, we moved out of mom and dad's store when they closed it up in town here, which was Discount Merchandise Center. We were supposed to get the contents of the trailer emptied out and gotten rid of. Last spring, dad accidentally passed away. Nobody's wanted to mess with it.
Commissioner Bender.
So what timeframe do you think you could have this site cleaned up to comply with our nuisance ordinances?
Are we able to get like a, a list of stuff? Because most of these vehicles are working and runnable and licensed and plated. So what exactly are you needing removed? I mean, because I know like some of the junk, but the vehicles all there are all operable and licensed and everything.
Would you be willing to allow somebody from our planning and zoning department to come in and, and inventory the property out there? So that they could prepare a list for you? Because we need your permission to be on the property.
Not, not inside the buildings, just a walk, walk through on the outside.
I don't see what it would hurt, I mean, because they'll see that all the vehicles, you know.
Yeah, I know Peter's got two, he's still trying to.
Yeah, our son has a couple vehicles out there.
He's trying to get titles for.
Our other son has a couple vehicles out there. It seems like everybody parks their vehicles on our, our property. So it's not something that we can get rid of somebody else's vehicles either, but.
White pickup, I'm supposed to pull the motor out of that and then that's gotta leave. Barely see the hood in that picture, but.
Yeah. And then the trailer, I think that's my son's and.
Yeah, he uses that for his business. I suppose. Some of them have historical plates on them, so.
So those are plated too, but.
But then I think there's one or two that I neglected to get them for.
But yeah, if, I wouldn't mind somebody coming out and, you know.
Vehicles, I know which ones need to go, but.
Basically, most of those vehicles, you know, they're all good, you know, and runnable.
At this point, I think Commissioner Bender's, I'm not gonna try to speak for her, but you know, we're, inclination may be to give you a little bit of time, let a staff person come out, see what's operable and what's licensed and kind of go through with you, okay, well, this has to go or, you know, this can stay because it meets the South Dakota codified laws. So, I mean, if you're willing to allow our person to come out and schedule a time in the next two, three weeks, I don't know what timeframe, but you know, give you sixty days to work on it after that and we can see if there's progress made.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'd be willing to give some grace, but you need to demonstrate your good faith. You need to start getting that building built, not just pull a pill, permit, but you need to get it put up and get these, the cars, vehicles that you intend to keep out of sight. Because this is a residence, it's not some, it's not a business, it's not a parking lot, it's a residence. And so, and, so that's, we need to, we, we're willing to work with you as long as you demonstrate good faith on your end.
I sympathize with you where your kids kind of just want to drop everything off, yeah, I get that. You have the room, right?
Yeah, we got the room, I guess.
Yeah, but it's not meant to be a dumping ground for vehicles either, so. Any other commission questions? Okay, we didn't have any proponents speaking, so I'll turn it, unless you have anything you want to add. Commissioner, would you like to make a motion to delay this action to a later date?
I'd be willing to do that. I didn't really get a timeframe, but I'd be willing to delay this, give you September, October and November, and delay it to our first meeting in December. That means you've got to have met with the, the planning and zoning and you need to demonstrate significant improvement by that date.
Is that a motion?
That is my motion, sorry.
So the first meeting in December?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll, I'll second that with a, a comment, just to, to reinforce that, that I'm seeing a letter describing the issue on February thirteenth, letter number two on April twenty-sixth, a final letter on May thirtieth, a notice of this public hearing on the twenty-third. So I just, I guess I would just emphasize that this isn't, don't get a sense that this is us giving you a second chance. This is, we, we're going on here and so this will be kind of the, the final warning here in the sense of, I know you're asking for a list for that to be accounted for, but I guess planning has been reaching out in good faith with, we need this cleaned up. So you've got to be showing that you're meeting us halfway on that as well. So I would just say that without significant improvement by our first meeting in December, this will, from my perspective, be declared a public nuisance. And then, so that's your other option is to have basically us clean it up for you and then bill you for that. So just understanding what the, the consequences are. But yeah, happy to second that motion to delay to December.
Additional comments? Call the roll.
Bender?
Aye.
Kipli?
Aye.
Blainberg?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye, motion carries. Hopefully we don't have to see you back. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, public hearing to consider declaring the property legally described as north one half of the southeast one quarter, excluding R one and excluding Country Villa Estates and ex, exclude, I think that's excluding Nelson's addition anyway. In section twenty-six, T one oh one north, R fifty-one west, a public nuisance and enact South Dakota codified law twenty-one ten six. This is kind of a irregularly shaped property, so that's why all those.
Yes. So this item is a prob, property that does not have an address on it. It's largely used for agricultural purposes. It's located just north of the Country Villa Estates subdivision along four hundred and eighty-fifth Avenue. Can maybe scroll down to, there's the, the odd shaped property. And you can see the subdivision is right there on the south property line. So this two is also a complaint that was received the winter this year. The initial complaint noted that there was a business being operated from the property and the accumulated junk and kind of vehicles happening on the, the site. Staff has, has kind of contacted the property owner and worked with them. As far as I can tell, it doesn't appear like any commercial use is being used on the property any longer because of the kind of the regular equipment is no longer there. But there is still vehicles and other event, abandoned stuff on the property that, that needs to go. Staff visited the property just last week on the, the fourteenth and took updated photos. As I noted, vehicles, junk and scrap remain on the property. Again, this is a little ways off the road, so there is some uncertainty as the expiration date of the plates. But it, it does appear like there are missing plates on a few of the vehicles. And then there are also vehicles that may not be operating at all or inoperable despite how the, the license on the, of the vehicle. Roll through a few of these photos. You can see some of the kind of the commercial trucks happening there. Vehicles getting parked there on a regular basis. Stuff being left on the ground. I, I think this trailer may be being used as like a storage type of thing that is not allowed according to the zoning ordinance either. So that would be another zoning violation. You see boulders and other things come the spring. The vehicle's still being parked there throughout the summer. And then, let's see, I'll bring it up to the more recent photos here. Fewer vehicles, we're down to only a couple of these kind of commercial type vehicles slash the trailer. It's hard to see, but you can see like an oven here and some other stuff going on right here. And this is a long distance away, but these vehicles are still there and unknown license. I don't think this one has moved since earlier this year. So that's where we are at currently. This is another property where staff is requesting that the county commission declare a public nuisance and enact South Dakota codified law twenty-one ten six. And I'm here for any questions.
Questions for Kevin? Kevin, does the property owner have a residence on this property?
No.
No, so it's not like they're living out there, okay. Okay. Commissioner Blainberg.
Is this the first instance with this property?
Yes, for this property, yep.
And the process began in February?
Yes.
Okay.
This is zoned ag, so if any of these were ag type of equipment, it would probably be permitted or not?
So if, I guess if there's tractors out there for, used for the field, that would be something permitted. But this is, based on what I see here, I see commercial type vehicles and vehicles that are left abandoned without, yeah, without any license or, or any like operating ability.
Okay. All right, there's no other questions from commissioners to Kevin. I will move on to proponents of this action to declare this a public nuisance. Any proponents? All right, is the property owner present? Would they like to address the opposition to this action?
Yes, my name's Kyle Olbers, I'm the owner of the property. I bought this property two years ago. If you've seen in the first picture, the middle of the property was all pasture. We broke all that up, tore the fences out. This is the contractor who's been hauling out the rocks, stuff. I've had him remove the vehicles, the cars. All the trucks are operating condition. He drove them all from the property yesterday, so there's nothing there right now. If Kevin would have taken his picture and showed a trail that he's been hauling rock all summer out there and we're conducting business. Like, I'm clean rock, I'm, I planted soybeans. He sent me one letter telling me I can't open a gravel pit out there. He was planting the soybeans, like, come on, can't tell that. But I have one, I have twelve neighbors that surround it. Of the twelve neighbors, I get along with all of them, but the two up here, they, they like to complain about everything. The one guy's mad because when he bought his property, he was putting the purchase agreement, he's supposed to put in a new fence. Now he's mad because I won't pay for half of it. It's like, well, that was part, that was in the bill sale. So he's mad at me and the guy across the road's mad. And we're just hauling rock out. And when the rocks done hauling out, he'll be out of the way. I don't want to farm around rock piles. But at the end of the day, I own this property. I'm conducting agriculture work out there. He's got a few extra things out there, but he's parked over the hill. He keeps it mowed out. I've watched him out there with a scoop shovel, taking out this lot. He's not being a nuisance to anybody but the guy who lives through a gravel pit over a hill, he can't see nothing. And yet, we're down here. So that's what, is what it is, we're gonna keep, the trucks aren't there right now. They're gonna be back at different points because we are moving rock. And if the neighbor across the road keeps complaining, there's gonna be a hog barn over there. So that's where we're moving right now, so. Any questions?
Any questions for the property owner? Commissioner Bender?
So I'm confused, so what is left out there right now? Is this A and M self-storage out there?
Nope, all those are operating. Here's a picture from this morning. That's a picture from this morning. There's nothing there right now, but you can see the trail where they've been driving through the bean field all year hauling rock out.
All that looks like an oven range or that type of thing, the.
Yeah, he had a few extra things there, everything's gone.
Everything's gone.
Now, but there's gonna be trucks out there.
Trucks for?
For, they're picking up rock piles out there. There's, I, I buried seventeen loads of rocks, dump truck loads, and there's probably thirty more out there to come out.
Okay, so a gravel truck's a little different than a.
He's a landscaper, so the red truck's in before, he had landscaping equipment, he hauls rocks on it. He's got four different trucks he hauls rocks with. He pulled a fifth wheel trailer with that white truck yesterday. And yeah, he's got a few extra things, but at the end of the day, right now, I mean, he's temporary and I don't know, well, they are not even here arguing, so. But stuff's gonna be there for the foreseeable future.
So just looking at that picture that's up there now, it looks like there's a residence behind?
Yep.
Okay, so those people can see.
That's not the guy.
Okay.
We should, we should get some pictures of that place. We want a public nuisance, we should start. There's twenty-five public nuisances within a mile radius of this. And you guys are, because one guy's complaining.
We only, we, we deal with public nuisances on a complaint basis, sir. And we don't go out looking for them. So if somebody complains, we gotta go out and we gotta look and see if they're.
Yeah.
If they're public, if vehicles have to be licensed. It's very specific on what we can declare a public nuisance, so.
They're licensed and I have explained to Kevin that there's contractor hauling rock out there. I'm gonna have excavators in because the trees in the road right away, they all have to come out, so I'll be removing those.
So you're turning this into a tillable?
Yeah, I farmed this whole thing up. And then after, I accused of opening a gravel pit by our planning and zoning commission because that's, that's Kevin, I guess. Been working with him for eight years and he's still not learning his job. Can't tell the difference between the gravel pit and a bean field.
Disrespectful comments don't earn you a lot of points.
I'm not, I'm not here to earn points, guys. I'm not. I'm, I'm, I can open.
Hey, sir, you're out of order.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? Commissioner Bender?
So I'm, I'm concerned, not concerned, I'm just following up and trying to understand your comment. So everything's off the property today.
Today, yep.
But then you said that they're going to be doing work on there. I'm curious if they have to park vehicles overnight there in order to haul rock?
Well, you want us to move vehicles in every other time we want to move rock?
That's a question I'm trying to understand the property.
Yeah, there's stuff going to be there overnight.
So tomorrow, are you going to move all those things back?
No, I'm.
They got moved out today, that's what I'm trying to understand.
But I told Pollock, do not want, like, the red vehicles there because he came out and got his truck and was hauling rock. That's why the red vehicle's there. I told him I don't want, there was two cars there that clearly were not running. I told him, I don't want those there. They're not going to be there. But the trucks and stuff, that storage vehicle won't be there. I don't even know what he has in there. But at the end of the day, I own this property, pay the taxes on this property. I'm working on cleaning up the property and I got the county commission and can't even figure out that I'm picking rock and they're telling me I'm opening a gravel pit. And then they're worried about this stuff. And at the end of the day, it's, I have a great, I've been farming, I've owned this for two years, I've been down here for 12 years. I have a good relationship with all but this one guy and now I'm here because of this one guy. So.
So to be clear, you're, and perhaps it's your contractor, the person you contracted with to haul rock, that you're responsible for the action, was keeping things on the property that weren't allowed and that is probably why you're here. But you have clearly cleaned that up at the request of the county.
That stuff has been cleaned up. The cars were moved well before this last one that we were going to have the nuisance. Other, there was a new car, I guess. That one is clearly running. The cars that were not in the early pictures were removed. The trucks, yes, he hasn't used them recently, but they all fired up yesterday. We drove them out there. They're all operating, they're all licensed. As you can see, he's been hauling all summer right through my bean field right there because we're trying to get, because there's about 10 rock piles that I'm farming around right now. And there's, I'm telling you right now, there's going to be a hog operation right there next year because he told his neighbor to knock it off and he hasn't. I'm here and that's the case. But there's no vehicles there today, so.
Commissioner Blainberg.
Thank you. I can understand your frustration and for the sake of the one neighbor who's also frustrated, can you give us an idea of how long the process plan, how long you plan to take or the contractor will take to remove the rocks? And maybe, you mentioned that vehicles will need to be parked there. Like, what kind of equipment can we expect to be parked there and for how long?
There's going to be trucks, skid loaders and expat, I mean, I don't have a timetable on when I'm, you know, I'm a dairy farmer and I have plenty of other things to do. I root trees when I can and I tile when I can. We're tiling out there. Neighbor was complaining because there was a tractor there for two years. Then they, I offered to sell it to him if he wanted to just buy it. I guess we wouldn't have to worry about it, but he didn't want to buy it. So I want everybody to understand, I own this property, it's agriculture, I'm picking rock, that's what farmers do. This is agriculture business going out here, so.
So there's not a for sure timeline, but?
No, there's not.
But the vehicles would be all related to removing the rocks? Not like the oven or inoperable vehicles?
Well, there's probably going to be some stuff related to a hog operation too, so.
All right, so, any other questions from the commission? It appears this property's been cleaned up. You can conduct your ag operations on this property unencumbered by us, but you're, I'm sorry, sir, your attitude really stinks, okay?
Yeah.
And you're threatening your neighbors. They just want to, they don't want to live across from, this stuff has obviously been there for quite some time.
Been there for less than a year.
Well.
Sorry, out of order.
And I have great respect for the ownership and property rights and I appreciate the fact that you're trying to just go about your business and do your thing, but, you know, I'm just going to look for commission action at this point. Anybody want to rescind this action or not declare it a public nuisance at this point? Yes, we can take, this is for the, we are on the opponents of the public nuisance. So anybody here is opposed to declaring this a public nuisance?
Thank you. Penny Babris here in Sioux Falls. I just want to step back and do an independent third party look at this real quick. What, Commissioner Bender made a comment that it bothered her when people didn't come up and speak in that first one and there was no proponent or opponent. So that makes your job very hard, you know, because you have to look at something. But then you turned around and went ahead and declared it a nuisance without an accuser coming forward. Now, you mentioned that when, you know, not looking for problems, but if somebody makes a complaint, then you will respond. But if all people have to do is make a complaint and they can stay back in the background, we're allowed to have, to face our accusers. And anyone that makes a complaint shouldn't use you as their arm to, you know, go after their neighbor as well. They should, you know, come forward and speak. And I just wanted to say that if we don't have an accuser standing up here, to me, that seems disingenuous to go after someone if they aren't willing to stand up and let, you face the accuser. And I keep repeating myself, I already said it, but it was just a comment I wanted to make. Thank you.
All right. Any other opponents to declaring this a public nuisance? All right. We had no proponents, so we don't need a rebuttal.
Well, I'm debating about whether we just defer this similar to what we did with the last one so that we have an opportunity to have an independent third party go out and view the property before we actually dismiss or make, take an action, no action. I mean, it does, it's just hard where we have a lot of pictures and then we have a picture that purports to be today, but we don't really know how it's going to play out over time. I mean, I don't doubt that they were all taken off. It appears to be that's the case here. I'm just trying to decide whether it's more consistent to just defer it for a period of time and have an opportunity to go back out and look at, look at it or if we should just take an action to not declare it a public nuisance. That's where I'm struggling right now.
Other commissioners have any comments? Commissioner Benega.
I would propose that we frankly wait maybe 60 days to have this reviewed again, but in the meantime, the eagleization, the planning and zoning group go out and inspect so that we know and have it verified. As far as not having proponents and opponents always here, sometimes people don't like to get into neighborhood arguments in public places, which I can understand. But if we would inspect and give him 60 days to make sure that he's doing what exactly he says he's going to do, I'd be happy to make that motion.
So just to clarify, the motion would be to bring it back in 60 days and either dismiss the action or revisit it.
Correct.
Could I ask a question of staff?
I have a motion, I need a second or?
I'll second the motion for purposes of further discussion.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Commissioner Blainberg.
I was just curious if we've, how we handle things like this in the past? What's our typical response?
Yeah, so it has happened before that similar type of action where, yeah, you defer action or have a date in the future to come back and we can go verify that things have been removed accordingly. And this would be a typical action, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions, comments? Call the roll.
Benega.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Kiple.
Aye.
Blainberg.
Aye.
Kerski.
Aye. Motion carries. All right, moving on. Consider a motion to approve sponsoring the town of Sherman for a funding application through the South Dakota Office of Emergency Management for a hydrological and hydraulic study. Jason Gierman.
Hi, Jason Gierman, Minnetonka County Emergency Manager. Throughout the last couple of years FEMA's been expanding some flood planes and Sherman, there must have been some kind of land sale or discussion of some sale and they found out about the issues with the flood plane. So they're looking to do this H&amp;H study. And being they weren't part of the brick program or the pre-disaster mitigation program, we have to sponsor them. We've done this in the past. So basically, this is just to say, okay, we'll sponsor them and then we work with the auditor's office if funds start flowing through for them.
All right. Public comment on this agenda item. Okay, questions for Jason? Commission action.
Could I ask a question?
Please.
Can you tell me what an H&amp;H study, what's the purpose?
I think it's, one portion is the water level itself and I think the other portion is the flow of the water through that area. So the engineer will come out and they've, they've actually met with the engineers already and got a proposal together where the funding is going to go to take care of this proposal. And Sherman is considered rural, maybe disadvantaged, so it's possible that they may just get it for free to see what, what issues they may have up there with this new flood, flood zone. And, you know, everybody's concerned with the expansion of the flood plane by FEMA of now having to pay for flood insurance, so I think that may be one of the issues.
Okay. Thank you.
So it's in a flood plane now and this might take it out of the flood plane?
No, I don't, I don't know this for sure, but I don't think it was in a flood plane before, but now it is.
Okay. Okay. And the study could remove it from that high-risk?
Other jurisdictions have tried this since, since FEMA expanded their flood planes. I think Dell Rapids, lots of areas through the Sioux River down through South Dakota. And they've been unsuccessful that I'm aware of. I don't know of anybody that has been, so I think that may be the first step in the process for them. But it all raised with a land sale issue that happened earlier this year, so.
Okay. I mean, theoretically, everything's in a flood zone, it's just what, what level, so. Okay. Okay. Commissioner Bender.
Well, I'm in favor of helping Sherman if we can and help them to study the issue and see if there's anything they can do about it. So I'd make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Call the roll.
Bender.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Blainberg.
Aye.
Kiple.
Aye.
Kerski.
Aye. Motion carries. Consider a motion to authorize a chair to sign a renewal to the Fusion Center lease agreement with the First Dakota National Bank. Morning again, Jason.
Hi, Jason Gierman, Minnetonka County Emergency Management. This is an agreement that we've done in the past for quite a few years, do it generally every couple of years. And it's basically so the state can pay for the lease through the county for the First Dakota National Bank for the Fusion Center. And kind of to add to that, this should be the last short-term lease as they will be moving in a couple of years to a new facility where there'll be a long-term, 10-year-plus lease with, without any rises in rent or fees. It's going to be through Dakota State.
Public comment on this agenda item.
Cindy Meyer. And I would just like to ask the question for an explanation of what the Fusion Center is, how it operates and what the cost of this lease is going forward. Thanks.
Okay. I'm Jason, just hang on. Okay. Any other public comments on this agenda item? All right. Commission, would you have any questions for Jason on this? All right. Yes, the only question I have is just so I'm clarifying, this is passed through the county, so the county is not paying for any of this.
No.
No cost.
It actually comes out of the Homeland Security Grant through the state and it's passed through here. There's a, there's a budget line item in that grant for this, for this project. And it's the same rules that we have with, with other entities. When the state has to pay for certain services, the county has to be the pass-through for it. So this is pretty typical on how it works with the state.
And when this lease expires, when does it expire? In October 31st, 2026.
Twenty twenty-five, so it is a one year.
Okay. We'll be signing a new lease. Do we sign the lease? Yeah, the lease is through the county, the state pays for it. Okay. So a new lease will come up at that point.
And then that'll be a long-term one.
Okay. What's the address of this property?
First Dakota Bank, it's downtown.
All righty. Commission, questions or action?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Call the roll.
Bender.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Blainberg.
Aye.
Kiple.
Aye.
Kerski.
Aye. Motion carries. Consider a motion to adopt amendments to the Minnetonka County Commission Rules of Procedure. Good morning, Meredith.
Good morning, Meredith Jarko, Commission Office. At our last meeting on August 6th, we reviewed the proposed revisions for the Rules of Procedure document. So there have been two additional revisions, which is just the addition of offices closed before Memorial Day and Veterans Day in the commission calendar. We just kind of missed those two. So those are the only two additional changes from the last time that this was presented. And I just kind of wanted to give a brief, very quick overview of the revisions. So revision one clarifies the calendar and simplifies it. Let me see here. Revision two just better reflects the need to update meeting dates. Revisions three, six, and 11 are for fixing formatting, stylistic and grammar issues. Revisions four, five, seven, and eight are updates to the rules to reflect our current meeting order of operations. Revision nine, just wanted to touch on quick. This, the addition of that public comments on an agenda item should be directed to the Board of Commissioners. Just wanted to clarify that that is, that comments be directed to the board and not the presenter of an agenda item, so just kind of wanted to, to clear that up. And revision 10 clarifies the process for placing an item on the agenda. And revision 12, I mentioned this last time, but it changes the review month from July to January just to kind of better align with the commission calendar. So we will then review this in January, but hopefully there won't be many changes since there are some changes now. But that's kind of just the 500-foot view of those revisions, which again, there weren't any additional changes from the last meeting aside from those additional offices closed. I am available to answer any questions.
All right. We will take public comment at this point on the revisions to the Rules of Procedure for the County Commission. All right. Commissioner Benega and I met with, I think, no, Commissioner Bender and I met with Meredith and Tom to kind of clean things up a little bit. And admittedly, this came from Mr. Meyer who said, you guys should be talking about these once a year, so that's why we did it. Talks about public comment, I mean, I guess it's all pretty self-explanatory in my mind what the changes are. We do, are, we are leaving public comment at the end of the meeting to conduct public business during the meeting. As you can see, today's a great example that a lot of the public are here for agenda items. It might be their own properties, it might be licenses. It might be licenses. So, you know, who do we inconvenience? Who don't we inconvenience? So that's just an issue we're going to deal with this way, I guess. So I'm going to move it back to the commission for other discussion and/or action.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. I don't think I need a roll call. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those same sign. Motion carries. We are now at the opportunity for public comment on non-agenda items. Again, please sign in if you're commenting on any agenda item.
Cindy Meyer, I was just up here, and I asked a question in regards to an agenda item, and I know we're on non-agenda items, but I never got an answer. It was public comment time to an agenda item, and I didn't get an answer. So the presenter says to me as he's leaving, I can tell you all this information after the meeting, but they're not allowed to answer these questions. Why aren't you allowed to answer the questions? The public wants to know. What is a Fusion Center? What does it cost in the county? Are you running the dollars through the county and somebody else is paying for it? The public wants to know, and the public asked a question. And now you just all sit up there and you look at me because nobody's allowed to talk to the public that's asking questions. You guys got no idea how frustrating it is to be on this side of the table. You got no idea.
Carrie Meyer, I'd like to do a follow-up on the Rules of Procedure. There were two requests brought forward two weeks ago on the Rules of Procedure. One was for the consent agenda items, and the other's for public comment. Dean, you did sort of address the public comment, but you didn't give a reason. You said public comment is going to stay at the end. It was requested to remove to the beginning by at least one person, and I think maybe two or three. And yet, not one of you gave us a reason as to why you want to leave it to the end. Because the people sitting on this side of the room think it's to suppress the public, because a lot of people can't be here and sit for one hour or two hours or three hours. They take off work. This is a public, an item. This is a public meeting. Why do you exclude the public? It's obvious you don't want to hear from the public. Perfect example. And last week, two weeks ago, you had another person that asked a specific question, what happened to an agenda item, and you ignored her. You did finally answer it at the end of the meeting. Why couldn't you have answered that when she was up? She had plenty of time left on the clock. Do you think you're above the rest of us? The second item is one that I brought forward. You have the consent agenda items, and it now says only a commissioner can remove it. And Dean, I give you credit. You at least asked the public if they have any comments. But the next chair might not do that. And even if somebody does have a comment, they can't remove it. Consent agenda items. Is this funny? Okay, you're smirking. I know you think I'm a moron. Yeah, I can see you mouth it over there. Disrespectful. Commissioner Bender said not to be disrespectful, please. Two years ago, it said, the chair of the County Commission shall ask if any commission or member of the public wants an item removed than consent agenda item. Why did you change it if it wasn't to suppress the public? Seems to me like this is a perfect way for you to slide something through that you want to address your own agenda. I think you guys need to take a look at how you're handling this. This is a public meeting. If you want the public's involvement, you need to listen to the public instead of sitting up there like kings and queens. It's starting to get annoying. No, it's very annoying. Yeah.
Jason Gierman, Minnetonka County Emergency Management. I just want to give you a quick update on the flooding, the disaster declaration. That process is kind of moving along. The next step is to have the townships come in to do a briefing, applicant briefing. So that'll be next Wednesday morning up at the County Highway Shop. They've agreed to host it up there. The county does have some, some funding that they're looking to get through this, and we just hope to have the townships show up and bring in their applications and get that process going. Thanks.
Other public comment?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Bob Sutton, a retiree here in Minnetonka County. And pardon me, I'm fighting a little bit of a chest issue. I'm here to thank you. Thank you for your public service. Thank you for your commitment to the most grassroots form of government that exists in the United States today, county government. Everyone is a member of, everyone is a resident of a county in the state of South Dakota. And this is the most grassroots government that it gets, and I think you don't get thanked enough. I read all the things that you are supposedly doing wrong by people who will not put their names on the ballot and run for public office. It's easy to criticize from this side of the dais. It's easy to stand in front and question decisions you make when you don't have to make those decisions. So please know that as I observe and as I watch, you're not perfect. No elected officials are. It's difficult to do what you all do every single week and every single day. Quite frankly, you have lives, you have careers, and you have businesses. But the vast majority of the hundreds of thousands of people who live in this county support what you do. The vast majority of people, the, by far, the people who are working every day to pay their taxes, to contribute to what's going on, appreciate and support you. The small percentage of people that have issues with every decision you make are the people that can be here, the 1%, the 2%, the 5%, whatever it is. But rest assured, the majority are there, doing their work, living their lives because they can, because government officials like you give us that opportunity, because public officials put their names on the ballot. We have spent, you all have spent an inordinate amount of time in the last year or two talking about elections. Elections are literally the backbone of American democracy. And yet, when you look at it, again, the vast majority think elections work. They think machines can actually count. It doesn't take people to stand there and hand-count ballots for it to be accurate. And people that are progressive and understand get that. And they're the people working that don't have time to count. Roughly, I apologize if my numbers are wrong, Minnetonka County has a $170 million budget. Elections as a line item of that budget are roughly $900,000. Not counting the time that certainly the auditor's office puts into it, but the elections themselves. Out of a $170 million budget, that's .058, .0058% of your budget. How much time have you spent talking about elections? Certainly more than .0058%. If you had a household that has $4,000 worth of expenses, it would be $24 of your monthly expenses. I'm pretty sure the vast majority of people do not worry about $24 of their $4,000 monthly budget. And yet, they expect you to spend the time and the effort and the energy on $900,000 out of a $170 million budget. So keep doing the $72 million a year you spend on law enforcement and making sure that our streets and county roads are safe. Make sure you pay attention to the $20 million that you spend a year maintaining roads so farmers can get their products to market, so people can drive safely, and that they can get their kids to and from school across the county. You're doing a heck of a job, and I just want you to know that. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Jean Childs, and I live in Sioux Falls. The gentleman that just spoke before me more than once was speaking for the majority of the citizens, the public. No, I think we need transparent, hand-counted ballot elections to determine what the great percent, the most majority percent of the public feels about things. Thank you for your time.
All right, I'm going to close public comment. Move on to commission liaison reports. Anybody? Commissioner Bender.
I'd just say, last week, we had an opportunity to celebrate some of the really hard work that was led by Carrie Benz and our human services team as we were, had the opportunity to go to ribbon cutting for the new housing units that were opened by Glory House. They will, through a grant and money that came through the MacArthur Foundation, they helped support and get that really to fruition. And it is going to fill a piece of the puzzle, of a pretty complicated puzzle for affordable housing across the county. But it really is going to provide housing, supportive housing with supports for people as they're coming out of the criminal justice system that will give them, hopefully, the best opportunity to re-enter the system and, re-enter society and not go back into the system. So that was, that was really fun. Sometimes we used to do really fun things, and that was really fun, I thought. And I really want to give Carrie Benz and, and her team and the whole team in the administrative commission office and folks that have really worked on that for a very long time. It was a pretty heavy lift. And we did have folks from the MacArthur Foundation at the very highest levels here for that. And we had, Commissioner Blumberg and I had an opportunity to meet with some of them, and it looks like our application for the capstone funding is progressing and some reason for optimism there, but that's not finalized yet. I think that's it.
All right. Commissioner Blumberg?
I had the opportunity to attend the park party, the most recent one, and turnout was good. It was a steady stream of nearby citizens that came by with kids and lots of interaction with law enforcement and a lot of partners that come out to provide services and information. The mobile food market was there. There was a skin testing. That was the first time they'd had that partner there. But they also provide like fluoride for children's teeth. And WIC is there to help people cut through some of the process with trying to access services. So altogether, it was a very good event.
Excellent. Commissioner Benega.
Commissioner Blumberg and I attended the state fair, the Ag Appreciation Day, and unfortunately, they introduced us, so we didn't make anybody mad. And the ag people seemed to be very appreciative of the time that we spent out there serving lunch along with all the other partners. I also attended an HRC, Housing Resource Committee meeting last week. It was very short, an update on the financial pictures and also the Safe Home Resources and volunteer people that not only help us with that more, but more importantly, help us with our relationship and keeping those tax credits clean and ready for transfer. That's it.
All right. Last Wednesday afternoon, I drove to Oaakoma, spent Wednesday afternoon and evening in meetings for the South Dakota Association of County Commissioners and all-day Thursday in meetings. We talked a lot about our platform, basically, for the legislative, upcoming legislative session. I won't even go into all the details. It's interesting conversation, but be sure it lasted about three hours. Couple of changes coming on with the state that are going to be coming up at our state convention, September 17th through the 18th. I'll be out there as an immediate past chair Sunday, the 16th through Wednesday, the 18th. So a few extra days. But attendance at the county, state county commissioners and county officials meeting, it's going to be, it's an interesting agenda. They have a lot of interesting sessions that are planned, everything from presentations from the U.S. Election Assistance Commission, Preservation and Prosperity, Keeping Rural South Dakota Alive, Department of Motor Vehicles, motor vehicle carriers, combating election misinformation, South Dakota Department of Motor Vehicles, again, road classifications, you know, when do we put weight limits on? So a lot of adding to that breadth and depth of knowledge as commissioners that, you know, maybe we don't get to deal with, that our peers in the more rural counties do. But it also helps us understand when our highway superintendent or our auditor or treasurer comes to us, that we can have a good grasp of the details of the job that they do. So I encourage your attendance at the state convention. Typically, we'll have several hundred people from across the state attending this convention. So just, good meeting last week, and convention's coming up. So that's all I have. Questions on that? All righty. Moving on to non-action commission discussion. Anybody have any non-action items? Okay, then I'm going to look for a motion to enter into executive session for the purposes of South Dakota codified law 1, 25, 2, 1, 3, 4, and 6.
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those same sign. Motion carries. We will go into executive session next door. Give us about five minutes or so to clean everything up and get over there.